Okay, it is 7:00 PM. I would like to call to order the Board of Selectmen meeting for June 25th, 2020, and I would like to read the following. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to an order issued by the Governor of Massachusetts dated March 12, 2020 suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded and are being recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is there anybody who would like to record all or any portion of the meeting this evening? We could use the raise hand function, that'd be great. Seeing none, I will take you through the agenda, let you know how the meeting's going to progress, and then we can get started with the business this evening. So we have really three items of business tonight that all concern the outside table service. We've heard requests over the last couple of evenings, thanks to the restaurant reopening team and the work of our local restaurants. So they're asking for permission to serve outside, sometimes in an expanded setting and sometimes for the first time ever. So we will run through each of those applications. I will ask the applicant to make a brief statement about the accommodations that they're seeking. I will look to a member of the restaurant reopening group to make some comments. I'll open the matter up to my colleagues, Joe, Mary, and myself. And then if there are comments or questions from the public, again, easiest for me if you can use the raise hand function, and I'll certainly recognize you. We welcome your participation. First item on the agenda, though, is the approval of the minutes of June 9th. I know that Joe had some changes that have been circulated. Are we ready to vote those minutes?
I am.
Okay. I would take a motion.
I move to approve the minutes dated June 9, 2020.
Is there a second? Are you muted, Mary?
Sorry about that second.
All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Karen? Aye. Okay. First up is Vida Mexicana, otherwise known as Plaza Azteca in Hingham. Request for outside table service and a modification to their liquor licenses. Is there someone here from Plaza Azteca that could take us through the accommodations they're looking for?
Yes, hi. This is Maria Bravo, the GM here at Vida Mexicana. Well, basically, we're looking for, yes, so as you can see on the layout, we're looking to do an outside area, and it would be on the back lot. I think you guys have already all our plans. You know, I did send a couple of options, and I think everybody was liking the one that is right, you know, a little bit, that one, exactly. So basically, yeah, that's the plan right there, you know, to have those tables there with umbrellas. And, you know, as you can see, everything is laid out right there. We were gonna have, of course, the barriers requested, and the flow, you know, we're thinking on the blue lines, it basically states, you know, how the customers would flow inside if they need to use the facilities, and then come out. And then the yellow, of course, states where the servers would come out and provide the service. And also, you know, the barriers requested and everything, just, you know, make it safe for everybody. Yeah, so that's what we got so far.
Thank you, Maria. Is there somebody from the restaurant reopening group that could speak to this application? I see a couple of hands. Lieutenant Denapoli?
Good evening. So, yeah, so they had sent in a few incarnations of the plan. We felt the back was probably the best spot to go, gave them some area, and also gave us the easiest way to set up one-way flow paths. We were able to basically, you know, bring the patrons in from one side and send them out from another side. Servers are able to use a completely different entrance, coming right out of the kitchen itself and going in and out through that one door. So it's a really good separation. The only disadvantage we had back here was just, you know, we do have the Jersey barriers going around for the protection of it. The green lines are actually wooden sawhorses because the dumpsters are at the rear of the building, and we had to, you know, leave access for the trucks to come in and be able to get there. So we felt that that was probably the best option, just put some kind of deterrent and use the barriers on the other sides and on that one corner, so people aren't coming around that corner, you know, give a little more protection to that area.
And besides protection, are the sawhorses compliant with ABCC rules?
I believe the ABCC was actually gonna be set up in the red, they would have some type of other barrier set up. And that would just, the Jersey, I'm sorry, the sawhorses would just to kind of extend the Jersey barrier to extend that that area is closed, so we don't get any possibility of vehicular traffic back there.
Thank you for that clarification. Anybody else from the restaurant reopening group care to make a comment? Seeing none, Joe, comments or questions on this?
I like the plan. I really like that there's a clear path for the bathroom route, that it's, it looks to me as if it's a one-way route, so that people won't be crossing paths. Did I get that, am I reading this correctly?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's really good. Who are your neighbors?
Basically, it's TD Bank. We have really good relationship with them. I mean, they, on occasion, let us use their parking lot on the weekends and stuff like that, so they're really accommodating. They're really nice.
Has this plan been reviewed with them?
No, because they were, I think they're closed right now, and they just opened unlimited, which they open like until 1:00 PM, which, you know, it would affect them fairly nothing. But I hadn't been able to discuss, because this location had been closed for some time now. She, the manager of, their manager was actually in here today having some margaritas, so, you know, we have a good, yeah, we have, I didn't mean to say that about her, but no, she's really nice, and we have a good relationship, and I know, you know, if she has any issue, she'll come to me and say something, but for the most part, you know, they're very, very nice.
No, I'm sure they're nice. I just, I wanna make sure that we're being proactive, and that, you know, to the extent that there are neighbors who could possibly be affected, that they are directly communicated with, and I was hoping that would happen prior to a presentation to this board. So I guess I would wanna make sure that that communication does happen, and that it's communicated, that someone lets us know that it was successfully done. Typically, if we, assuming that we move forward with this, I'd at least like something in our files, either from you or from the neighbor, confirming that they had a discussion, you had a discussion, you went over the plans, and there are no objections.
Okay, I can do that, no problem.
Great, thank you.
For the questions, Joe?
Nope, nothing else.
Thank you, Mary.
So it looks like there are a total of 13 tables, is that correct?
That's what we put so far, but definitely any tables that we put, honestly, right now we have eight, because we have difficulty finding them, to be honest. So right now, it's not even 13. But if we do put any tables, of course, they're gonna be with the specifications provided. Everything like it looks right there, you know, with the six feet from the barrier, and, you know, more than six feet from each other, which is how we labeled that out. So, you know, we just, we just put those because that's what made sense. So we're gonna keep with that, if that makes sense.
Okay. And so at a six-by-six table, what would be the maximum party size at a six-by-six table?
Um, I believe all-
Six.
I believe all the tables that we have right now are four-seaters. So that's, that's what we have at this moment. However, if we add more tables, of course, everything will be taken in consideration, you know, like, basically, again, you know, following all the guidelines and the rules, and whatever doesn't fit, it doesn't fit, so.
Sure.
Yeah, so that's, honestly, like I said, we've been having difficulty finding extra tables, and right now what we have is eight, and we're trying to collect, you know, to get tables as soon as we can. It's just they're backordered and whatnot, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
And just a question for the, I think this is for the restaurant reopening group, Susan, maybe this is for you. The extent that with this plan, does an applicant have the ability to combine tables? So if Ms. Brava has, for example, two small tables, each seating four, can she put them together as long as the six-feet distance is maintained and the party size is no more than six? Do we offer that flexibility or not?
It hasn't been directly asked of the working group, but the goal here is to maintain the six-foot distances. So if they had a party of six, which is the maximum right now allowed under the state reopening guidelines, then if they pulled them towards each other, so into kind of one of the blank squares, then they would be more than, they'd be even further away than the other table. So I don't think, there's no restriction on them doing that. It's just a matter of, you know, making sure that the distances are maintained, and that the six-party limit, the six-person party limits are maintained.
Correct, okay. Yeah, thank you. I actually, I drove over and I looked at the site today, it's close to where I live, and actually, I think your layout, this is, this is an ideal location, and I'm actually glad that you can be behind the restaurant, because I think it's a more pleasant dining experience for your customers. So I don't have any further questions.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Chief Olson?
Hi, this is Chief Olson. Just did wanna mention, too, is that we did have a little bit of discussion about the fact that there is actually extra space, and one of the things I mentioned at the other meetings is that the extent of the diagrams are different from each one. So each block represents a six-by-six space. The tables would be a little bit smaller. So they have plenty of room to expand, and I think that with, our main goal in this whole project was to get people up and running as quickly as possible, so that they could start to get back some customers and restore their, and give work back to the employees. So if they, if they go to add a table or something like that, they can contact us, and we'll make sure that it's in a safe location. And we've had events outside here in the past, almost yearly on Cinco de Mayo, and they've always gone well, and there's never been any issues. It's a relatively commercial area. The noise of Queen Anne's Corner probably will be louder than what the activity is back there.
Thanks, Glenn. Maria, I did have a question more about takeout. Where your blue line is, is the next doorway up? Is that the way in and out of the main restaurant? And is that, is that where you, I'm assuming you've been doing takeout, or will be?
Well, there's a, it doesn't, it doesn't really show it there, but there's actually three doors there. So that, the door that's shown on the, on the, you know, on the blue walkway, it's like the ramp, if you, if you see that. So that's like the ramp on the side door. And then on the front, there's an actual two more doors that we can, you know, people can come and go for their to-go orders and other, you know. So they, they're definitely, they definitely can, can stay separately, come in separately at least.
Okay, great. I know we've been a little bit concerned about that with other applicants, and as Mary and Joe said, I think your setup is somewhat ideal to take this on, given, you know, multiple entry points, as well as, you know, the space out back and the kind of commercial setting. So I think that this, this would be great for your customer base.
Yes.
Questions from, questions or comments from the public with respect to Plaza Azteca's request for outdoor table service?
There, I get calls every day. They're just waiting on it.
I bet you do. This will be, I think the umbrellas will be great, I'm sure it'll be attractive back there, so.
Oh, yes, yeah, every day, like, literally, I, at least 10 calls a day do you have an outside area, and we'll, you know, we just say we're working on it, you know, keep calling back, that's all we can do at this point. But, but definitely, everybody's excited, so I'm, we're desperate for the business, so we're super excited as well.
So Susan, maybe, I just wanna be clear, as we were on Tuesday evening with the process from here, should the board choose to approve this application, Sharon Pathetti would need to file a certification of our vote, I guess, with the town clerk. I understand from earlier emails with Lieutenant Denapoli that I think if we do that, we would make sure that ABCC has been placed and that the site is ready to go. Could you maybe take us through that, Susan?
Yeah, so what will happen is, once the board votes, assuming you vote affirmatively, then the conditions that you have are put into an actual approval, like a permit. Sharon will email that to the town clerk. The town clerk will send back an email confirming receipt. That has been happening very quickly. Sometimes they'll happen the same night as the meeting, at the latest, they'll happen first thing in the morning. And as soon as Sharon has confirmation from the town clerk that it's filed, Sharon will forward that to the restaurant owner, and then that means their permit's in effect. When, I know that you have certain specific conditions that you're gonna read, so that they'll have to make sure that the Jersey barriers are in place, the enclosure is in place, and I believe someone from the working group, either from the Police Department or the Fire Department, will just come up and confirm that all the safety features are in place. And in fact, you know, they should reach out. I think that the restaurant's been working with Lieutenant Denapoli, so he might be the best person, and they'd be able to come up, make sure of the Jersey barriers and all the safety features, and then they're good to go.
Okay. So it sounds like, Maria, you will need, once you get that permit certification, you'll need to reach out. Is it, Lieutenant Denapoli, would you be the contact point to finalize this?
Yeah, that's fine. Maria has my phone number, so as soon as she's ready, she can give me a call, and I will, I will swing right up there, so they can get going and not be delayed any further.
Okay, great, thank you. Further questions or comments with respect to Plaza Azteca's application for outside table service?
I just have a procedural question for Susan. What I asked for before is a letter either from the applicant or from TD Bank, just confirming that this plan has been reviewed with them, and that there's no, no objections have been voiced. I was not intending on making that a condition, but more of a statement that if, that needs to be presented and at the Selectmen's Office by our next meeting, which is next Tuesday. Susan, do you suggest we do it that way, or make that as a condition for the approval?
I would recommend that you just, you add it as a site-specific condition.
I am in favor of that. I think that there's been a finding by the working group that the butters are, you know, that there was no adverse impact to the butters. I'm perfectly happy, Joe, and I concur with your concern about making sure that butters have been notified, but I do not concur with making that a site-specific condition in this case.
So what would you suggest so that we were sure that the butter was notified?
Well, I, to me, I think we've made the request of Maria, and Lieutenant Denapoli, do you have a suggestion here?
Yeah, if it would appease the board, I will gladly, when I go up to check everything off, I will gladly pop in a TD Bank and speak to the manager and make sure she's okay, and report back to the board if that, that would make you happy, if that's okay?
That's fine with me.
Okay. Widen's up, then we'll make sure that TD Bank's on the record as, as being in support of this. I just don't wanna, I don't wanna weigh this down, particularly, Joe, because if the TD Bank hours are variable, I just think that, you know, I don't wanna slow this down with, you know, kind of another paperwork requirement.
I really appreciate that, thank you.
Further questions or comments? Are we ready to vote?
I think we're ready.
Okay, so just like we did Tuesday night, we'll run through the long vote for, for the first vote, including the general conditions, and then for subsequent votes, again, should we vote in the affirmative, we will refer to the general conditions as stated. So would one of my colleagues care to make a motion?
Sure. I'll make a motion that the board approve the application of Plaza Azteca Hingham DBA Vida Mexicana to expand outdoor table service, OTS, in accordance with COVID-19 Order 35 and the Town of Hingham COVID-19 Temporary Policy Regarding Restaurant Open Table Service, the OTS policy, subject to the following conditions. One, no amplified sound nor other entertainment shall be permitted in the outdoor dining areas. Two, the placement of the two Jersey barriers along the TD Bank side of the dining area shall be modified to be closer to the dining area in a location to be approved by Hingham Public Safety Officials. Three, in accordance with ABCC guidelines for extension of premises to patio and outdoor areas, the entire OTS premises, as shown on the approved plan, must be enclosed by a fence, rope, or other means to prevent access from the pedestrian walkway areas. Such enclosure must be in place in a manner satisfactory to the Hingham Public Safety Officials prior to the opening of the OTS premises. B, general conditions. One, outdoor table service shall be permitted in compliance with the approved plan. Two, the location, size, and layout of the OTS premises approved herein may not be modified without further approval. Any request for modification must be submitted in writing with detail as to the proposed modifications to restaurantopening@hingham-ma.gov. Three, addition of amenities such as tents or outdoor heating units is subject to further review and approval. Requests for such amenities shall be sent in writing to restaurantopening@hingham-ma.gov. Four, approval holders shall be responsible for regular cleaning of trash and food in the OTS premises, and shall not allow trash, food, or other nutrients to accumulate or be deposited intentionally or unintentionally into storm drains. Five, approval holders shall fully comply with all applicable state and local laws, regulations, and standards, including without limitation, A, Town of Hingham COVID-19 Temporary Policy Regarding Restaurant Outdoor Table Service; B, Massachusetts COVID-19 Mandatory Workplace Safety Standards; C, Massachusetts COVID-19 Safety Standards and Checklist Restaurants; D, ABCC Advisory Regarding Guidelines for Extension of Premises to Outdoor, to Patio and Outdoor Areas. Six, this approval may be subject to additional public safety conditions to ensure the safety of the diners, pedestrians, and vehicles if determined by the town that an unsafe condition exists once outdoor table service is in operation. And seven, the establishment may be subject to periodic inspection for compliance with this approval. Failure to comply with this approval may result in suspension or revocation of this approval and in fines in accordance with Massachusetts law.
Second?
All those in favor? Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Karen? Aye. Second vote?
I move, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry, Mary, go ahead.
Okay, I'll make a motion that the board approve the request of Plaza Azteca Hingham DBA Vida Mexicana pursuant to COVID-19 Order Number 35 to temporarily alter the licensed premises under liquor license 00063-RS-0528 for the period commencing as of the effective date of this approval and expiring on November 1, 2020.
Second?
All those in favor? Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Karen? Aye. Great. All right, Maria, good luck, and Lieutenant Denapoli, thank you for working to finalize these conditions with the, with the applicant.
No problem.
Okay. Next on our agenda is an application for outside service from the range. Is there, I saw Jeff Taccio here earlier. Jeff, are you representing the range?
Yes, hello, Karen, it's Jeff Taccio. With me is Will O'Connell from the range, and then also Gabe Crocker from Crocker Design has prepared the plans.
Great. If you could just basically summarize the number of tables, the space, what the range is looking for with respect to this application?
Excellent, will do, thank you. We submitted on June 23rd one of the, the applications for the OTS, also the ABCC application for alteration of premises, an OTS plan, and then the required insurance and copy of the lease. We received comments back from the reopening committee, and the next day, on the 24th, we made another submission to you folks, which was a revised OTS application, which conformed the hours of operation to the long-existing hours, so we've got no change there. Also, we made revisions to the plan, which you folks have, which required labeling of ABCC, required enclosures, staggering tables to increase service space, basically identify food takeout areas, server paths more clearly defined, and then to indicate golf passage paths, so that we could demonstrate a clearer separation between the golf driving range and also the restaurant operations. You've got the plan up in front of you now. North is oriented to your left, and Whiting Street will be up to the east, which would be above, or the top of, got here for the plan. We show the area, you can see the building, which goes in, it's got an angle, and then you can see that we've identified certain service paths. Also, what we've done is we've identified the back patio area, which is to the west, and we have arrayed the various tables there. If you look at it, and I'll start with the top, what we do is we've got the main entrance, which will serve as main entrance for both takeout and patrons. We've got all of the COVID-19 required signage, everything is there at that entrance. Up in, it breaks you off with arrows to the right, and then we've got a dedicated path which goes through the, the restaurant, and then goes out to the outside areas through a six-and-a-half-foot wide door. You'll notice if they say to the right, there are arrows, there's a hostess station, which has been identified with the ballards and the straps as a divider from that area to the seating area. We then show the various seats, number of seats that we show, 136, yep, 136 is the approved number for the Title V Septic System, which is here. Last year, typically, what we had was 90 seats outside, and then what we've done in this iteration is to add additional seats in order to get the area laid out for the 136 seats. Show all of them, they're the six-foot spacing, as you can see on the plan. When we show an array of, you know, some of them have two at them, four, just to show that various configurations wind up fitting here. 136 folks are restricted to on seating, but I'll show you an array of what we've got here. It lays out basically towards the top of the seating, under the pergola, and then to the north of the existing gas fireplace. That was the area that's always been used for the previously approved seating area. Then do is we get down to the west onto an area of astroturf, and then what we've done is we've taken the paved asphalt area, which previously was the area of eight driving pads for the driving range, and then that area also allowed for the ball machine to go through and access. You can see the existing golf ball station up near the building. That was a path that was used for the golf operations. What we've done is we've put up the ballers, the barriers, in order to segregate this area. And then if you'll take a look over on the south side of the building, that's where we're going to have the golf operations operated out of that area. There's gonna be a sign, golf access only, diners use main entrance, so that folks know to go over to the front door. And either we have delineated a path that comes in, an area for the ball station, the door to, is all separated away from where the seating is. And then what we've done, if you take a look to the west of the seats, have shown the ballards, and then we've got the path area, which is separated. Will has obtained steel barriers, so they're not shown on the plan, but they can be there tomorrow morning at 11:00 for inspection. Those will be up, which provides a second physical barrier. And then what we're going to do on the, on the grass there with the paths, is we're going to get some spray paint, we're going to separate the travel lanes, also the arrows as to where the walking paths are. And if you see over to the north, we've got an array, there are eight rectangles, which are in green, and that's a relocation of the eight driving stations that have been, are relocated from the area where the tables are going. For the golf pro, that's where the lefties are going to be sent to. Because, I'm a lefty, just because, you know, when you hit, lefties have a way of, we're just basically fading everything away, and it's, you know, work out a little better over on that side. Other than that, we can focus on the travel paths. We do have servers. You can see an isolated single door where the servers go in and then hook around to the left to where the kitchen is. That's one way that we can segregate that traffic. Otherwise, coming out of the kitchen, you can see that they exit. Otherwise, coming out of the kitchen, you can see that they exit and they come out the six-and-a-half-foot door. There is some sharing of that path with the traffic, which come in, also exit the restaurant. And then we've also delineated the path to the bathroom. There's a somewhat narrow hall over with the bathroom that is there, so you can see that that's just an existing. Restrictions really no, or better way to really get them into that area. As far as neighbors, Will has reached out to the folks that are the Condominium Association members over at Derby Brook. And he received a comment back. We believe someone was going to call in, you know, approving and, you know, both saying that they did get the notice and then also typically have very good relations with our neighbors on that side. The closest unit is about 445 feet away, and that would be basically to the south, and that would be the closest Derby Brook unit. Over across the street, I believe it's over 500 feet, but again, the building is in the way, the parking lot, and then we've got a significant grade change and then also Whiting Street. I think that all works out, all works out pretty well. I'm just looking this over to see if there's anything that I missed. And with that, I can answer any questions if you folks have any questions.
Let me move to ask a representative from the restaurant reopening group if they have any comments they'd like to add to Jeff's presentation this evening. I can't, I'm having trouble with my raise hand function when we're in this format with the screen share, so jump on in if you'd like to.
Hey Karen, it's Lieutenant Danapoli. So, basically Sergeant Kilroy and I were actually out here Saturday after town meeting. We didn't have quite enough fun there, so we decided to go out to the range and check them out, too. But apparently there was a misunderstanding, and that's why they had had an issue on the Friday night before. And Nate, the manager, met us there. He explained everything to us. You know, we kind of walked the whole property with them. We went over his plan, his ideas, offered him some guidance, you know, and basically said, like, what you guys are saying is great, we just need it in writing, and we need an actual physical plan to review and to bring to the restaurant reopening group to be able to say, like, yes, this will work. And they did submit it. You know, we did make a couple modifications. We just kind of staggered the tables a little bit just to ensure that six-foot spacing and, you know, server area. They are kind of limited to the 136 because of the septic there, and that's always been their limitation, but they're able to, you know, basically maximize their area by going down into the driving range area and setting up the tables there. There'll be no type of, any type of alcohol service anywhere else on the property, because the only place they could do it would be in that expanded seating area by the ACC regulations. They're well aware of that. They are going to be diligent about that. I actually helped Nate, we set up a smoking area. I also talked to Betty from the Board of Health, and the smoking area is actually going to be set up up top on the paved pathway away from the building, away from the diners and everything else, and that avoids them having to go back to the front of the building to smoke, so that'll cut down some foot traffic there and keeps anybody from smoking on the greens or anything else. You know, we all kind of agreed, it's like, they have the ideal situation where it's their property, traffic near the diners isn't an issue, everything's laid out the way it needs to be. They understand they're going to actually have menus attached to the tables, so there's no question about if you need food service to have alcohol service. They put some really decent effort into this, and we're pretty pleased with what they brought back to us.
I'm just, it's remarkable how quickly you were able to turn this around. I think, I think your conversations helped them put together a good package, and then, you know, your ability to work with them so quickly to get this application before us tonight is, you know, I'm sure that they appreciate that effort. Okay.
Yeah, and actually, I should have opened with that. Sergeant Kilroy and Lieutenant Danapoli, just tremendously helpful. Susan Murphy as well. We really appreciate, we had to move very quickly on this, and they got comments back to us right away, and greatly appreciate it.
Great, great.
That's fair.
Joe, questions or comments? Oh, I'm sorry.
This is Susan. I was just going to point out, they had also submitted, this is a plan showing it's about almost 450 feet to the nearest abutter. They also did provide an email from the Condominium Association that they had been notified with respect to the expanded seating, so that a abutter notice had been received.
Okay. I mean, you know, I realize it's an expansion of a certain number of tables, but it doesn't, it's not really a change in that outdoor usage of that space. I mean, that's been, operation's been there.
Right. We were just following the direction when the board adopted the policy, that because the state had eliminated the statutory required notices to just ask that similar notice be given, so that was the intent.
Yeah, no, I don't just... Yeah, I'm just saying, it's just not a brand-new operation. I'm sorry, who'd like to be recognized?
I'm sorry, it's Janet Bardong from Derby Brook. Sorry, I knocked myself off when I tried to answer before, I apologize. We have spoken, I spoke with Will, I have seen the plans, and I'm president of the HOA, and we have no problem.
Great. Thank you for making the effort to call in, we appreciate that.
Not a problem.
Further questions or comments? Joe?
I think this is a thorough plan, it's well thought out. I appreciate the notice that was given and really the work that's going into the plan by the committee. I did have a question for Jeff, whether or not there's any signage that's contemplated in conjunction with the outdoor seating.
Additional signage?
Correct.
Such as?
I don't know if you were, you know, preparing or proposing directional signs for people or informational signs, or no signs. It's really just an open question.
Yeah, thank you. There are, if you go into the building, we didn't call them all out, but there are signs, you know, one-way, you know, et cetera, that exist now. When we get out there as well, what we're going to do is we're going to take a look around the edges, look at where the golf is. So, for example, to say, you know, you have to go around, you know, no admittance of the restaurant, you have to go back through the front door, but we need to see how it all starts to come together, and then we'll look for, like, light spots. For example, we missed something, something's unclear, we'll go in. We just, we tried to force you the best we can here, so I'm sure they'll actually...
Okay. I've got no other questions. I think this is a very thorough job. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Joe. Mary?
I don't know if there's anyone on the line who can answer this question, but it looks like the outdoor seating capacity is 136 people, and I'm just wondering what the staffing level for the range will be for, to serve and be attentive to 136 patrons?
So, one server per four patrons?
Four tables.
Four tables, I apologize.
Thank you. You know, it's, I echo my colleagues' comments about the plan. I appreciate that you've reached out to the abutters. It's very nice to see that you're able to do this and be able to accommodate 136 people because we know that this has been a difficult time for the businesses. I would anticipate that the range has always been a really popular place to go, particularly in the summer. And I think knowing that a lot of restaurants are going to be limited in the number of tables they have, you folks are going to be a popular destination because you have more seats and can potentially accommodate more people. I appreciate the thought that's gone into this plan, and I just, I hope that we can all be just attentive to making sure that all of the patrons follow the guidelines and the plan that's laid out. I think that's just going to be a little tougher for you folks because of the size and number of tables, but I think with the staffing plan you proposed, I'm more comfortable with that.
Great, thank you. And I should also mention just the importance of this. You folks know, I'll say it in the, you know, in the hearing, 90 workers were laid off back, you know, unfortunately, and this is, this is really giving a tremendous opportunity to be able to bring people back. So, you know, Will feels it, feels it from, you know, just, not guilt, but, you know, unfortunately having to go through those measures, and it's a real positive vibe they have going on. The workers are, you know, being, it's being explained to them, we have to comply, you know, we're all here, we're lucky, we have to, you know, stay with the program. Massachusetts is doing tremendously, and that's the message that's going to be delivered to all those folks.
Oh, sorry, Mary, go ahead.
I'm all set, thank you.
You know, I appreciate that, Jeff, very, very much. And I also think, you know, and I think the reopening staff has probably told you this, you know, there will be periodic checks of all of the OTS applicants from time to time. So, you know, I think the town is balancing both its interest in making sure that businesses can get back up and running with its obligations to protect public health. So, you know, I think we've, again, tried to be responsive to the request from the restaurant groups in town, but, you know, it's good to hear that that message of compliance is coming from the top leadership of the restaurant to the staff, because, you know, that's what's going to keep all this operation going, and frankly, that's what's going to keep us all safe in this environment. Sergeant Kilroy, see your hand.
Yes, ma'am. I just wanted to reiterate with regards to the staffing levels. When Lieutenant Danapoli and I did visit, we had made recommendations to the management there about maybe having some extra staffing to keep on hand to watch the area, and they were very receptive and already had that in the works. So, I know we already discussed it as we had gone on, but it was very nice to see that, and they were very receptive to it, and there's been no issues there, so very happy to see that.
I appreciate that comment, thank you. Okay, further questions or comments from the public with respect to the outside tables service application by the range? I'm seeing none. I would accept a motion unless my colleagues have anything further.
I'm ready to do a motion.
Okay.
I move that the board approve the application of the Range Hingham LLC DBA The Range to expand outdoor table service OTS in accordance with COVID-19 Order Number 35 and the Town of Hingham COVID-19 Temporary Policy Regarding Restaurant Outdoor Table Service, the OTS Policy, subject to the following conditions. A, site-specific conditions. One, without limiting general condition number five below, unless and until bar service of alcohol is permitted under the Commonwealth of Massachusetts COVID-19 Reopening Plan, the following restrictions shall apply. A, alcohol may only be served with food orders to patrons seated for table service. B, no alcohol may be served to driving range patrons. C, no alcohol may be served to patrons waiting to be seated. Two, no patrons shall be permitted to wait for seating within the OTS premises. For example, patrons must wait in their cars or in other areas beyond the service area where six feet social distancing can be maintained. Three, prior to commencing operations in the OTS premises, the enclosure located between the tables and the grass walking path along the driving range must be placed at least six feet from the edge of the tables along the grass. Four, prior to commencing operations in the OTS premises, the pedestrian pathway shown by arrows on the approved plan must be physically marked on the ground. B, general conditions. The general conditions are as previously described in the prior motion.
Second? All those in favor? Joe?
Aye.
Mary? Aye.
Karen? Aye.
Okay. And Jeff, you know, we've gone through the processes for this, so I'm assuming you're all on board with how this is going to roll out and the, you know, that sort of final inspection, you know, likely by Sergeant Kilroy and Lieutenant Danapoli to, you know, get this up and running.
Excellent. I expect, I'll give them a call, I expect to take a look at the time.
Great, thanks.
Karen, the second motion?
Yep.
Yes, second motion.
So, I move that the board approve the request of the Range Hingham LLC DBA The Range pursuant to COVID-19 Order Number 35 to temporarily alter the licensed premises under a liquor license number 00066-RS-0528 for the period commencing as of the effective date of this approval and expiring on November 1, 2020.
Second? All those in favor? Joe?
Aye.
Mary? Aye.
Karen? Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up for outdoor table service consideration is BE&amp;E Inc., doing business as The Snug. Is there somebody on the line from The Snug who can take us through what you're looking for, how many tables you're adding, the general location and the like?
Good evening, Karen. Ted Brown from The Snug. I believe we're looking at the layout, layout for the outdoor seating. Behind the snog on the tunnel cap, consists of six tables, 24 seats. We've been sending over the proposal to Susan Murphy, and that's pretty much what we have right in front of us. I was able to meet with DPW yesterday, I believe, they were able to provide some covering for the alleyway area. Mike Clancy and Sergeant Kilroy, I met with them also, and were able to, pretty much, I think Michael Clancy, I think you suggested that the DPW handled it, and they were nice enough to come out and take care of that yesterday, I believe. And that's pretty much what we're looking at right there, right in front of you.
So, it looks like a couple of four tops, a couple of six tops, and then are there two, two tops by the edge there?
Yeah, two, two tops. So, you have two sixes, two fours, two twos. The few issues that were brought up, I think on the left-hand side of the screen of the proposal, were brought up that we were able to address, one being the lighting. Paul Miller Angel is my electrician, and we can update our lighting, which is already on the side of the building, just to get a little bit brighter back there. Mr. Clancy brought up covering the drain during operating hours on the tunnel cap for, you know, so somebody wouldn't step on it or trip on it. We were able to take care of that. The public walkway, number three, was covered and smoothed over by the DPW, thanks to Mr. Clancy's advice. The fence enclosure, I believe on the second page at a higher elevation, was a post and chain with concrete base support at the perimeter of the seating area enclosed. Access to the snog restrooms were brought up, will be provided during operating hours. Patio and enclosed seating does not exceed current occupancy allowances. And then a number six denotes weightstep path of entering and exiting the seating area. So, we felt that this was a nice way to be able to provide some outdoor seating and certainly stay within the COVID range of six feet between tables and existing pathways. So, that's pretty much what we're looking at right in front of me there.
Okay, great. And there'll be, I'm sorry, this may be on the plan somewhere, there'll be a porta potty placed on the tunnel cap as well.
Well, that was brought up the other day with Mr. Clancy and Sergeant Kilroy were there. I didn't really either, we picked out a spot that it possibly would be there. I would suggest, you know, if that's a condition, obviously it's something we have to do, but quite frankly, I just redid the entire restaurant. Our bathrooms are brand-new, there's hand sanitizer, that's a washing, the bathrooms are easily accessible from the patio, proposed patio area. And at 20 seats inside, we're well below our occupancy rate, our occupancy allowed for the pub itself. We feel fairly comfortable that, you know, particularly during hours, we can utilize the bathrooms inside to be able to accommodate our customers, you know. If you look at the Square Cafe, or you look at anything else downtown, or anything in any one of the other restaurant areas, they're accessing their restrooms through the front door as normal. So, you know, initially when we talked about it, I was surprised or didn't really think it was necessary, but certainly, again, depending on what the board decides, it's really up to you folks and to decide what I can and can't do out there. So, you know, I own three buildings downtown there, 110, 112 North, 114, 116 North. Both have apartments above that are occupied by tenants, and I think, you know, if we can, we can, I feel very confident that we can accommodate the 24 patrons in a safe manner for them to be able to use our indoor bathrooms at the moment. That's my position at the moment, but again, that's up to the board to decide the ultimate, you know, the final... the ultimate, you know, the final decision on that side.
Okay. Thanks, Ed. Is there somebody from the restaurant reopening group that could speak to this application? And in particular, I note that one of the site-specific conditions is a porta potty. And I know that we have spent some time considering the location of the porta potty in connection with the license and relationship with the MBTA. So, we could drill down on, on that a little bit. That'd be helpful.
Sure. Good, good evening, Karen and the board. This is Mike Clancy. Myself and Sergeant Kilroy were down there a couple of times looking at the site. Every one of the places that we have approved has access for a handicap to a bathroom. They do not have to go up a set of stairs to go into a building. I understand The Snug is an old building. They have stairs. They can accommodate people inside The Snug. But now that they're creating a new space, even though it's temporary, it's required to have a handicapped accessible bathroom. And that's under the Architectural Access Board rules and regulations, along with the Massachusetts Plumbing and Gas Code. So, that's why we're asking to put that in there as a condition. Sergeant Kilroy and myself found a spot in the back of the building that's about 25 to 30 feet from where the patrons will be sitting at the tables. Again, this was kind of a joint venture with Sergeant Kilroy and myself. So, I'm going to defer the rest of it to him, except for DPW Randy Sylvester did take care of that access issue. I have not had a chance to take a look at that, but I did meet him there yesterday along with Sergeant Kilroy and JR and, and discussed what needed to be done there on a temporary basis. Again, we're all trying to do the best we can for the, for the, for the business people here. And again, it's kind of a unique situation. But for somebody to try and go from the table up that, up that temporary ramp that was just made, and then go up a couple of set of stairs to go into The Snug to try and go to the bathroom, again, it, it's too much. And that's why we are requesting the porta potty in the back.
Okay. Thank you. And, and Michael, I'm just assuming that although the governor's executive order with respect to outdoor table service suspended a bunch of rules, it sounds like those rules are still in effect.
As far as the plumbing code is still in effect, he did relax the rules on zoning.
Okay.
But you still have to allow people to be able to get in and use a bathroom safely. And again, they would have to go up a, a ramp all the way to the front of the building, then go up a couple of set of stairs. And all of the other places that we have approved, they've had a, an, a pathway, whether it's in the front door or a back door, they did not have to go up any stairs.
Okay.
Karen, this is Tom. Do you mind if I jump in for a sec?
Please do.
So, furthering what Commissioner Clancy has, has told the board, I've sat through, as you can imagine, dozens and dozens of statewide meetings on, on the COVID-19 response with all sorts of state officials, including the Attorney General and others. And what we've been told is while the state is willing and has, in fact, worked out temporary parameters by which restaurants and other businesses can try to operate in, under new guidelines temporarily, to a per, to a person and to a meeting, I've heard over and over again that we need to make sure that we, we continue to, to monitor and to, and to follow all of the, the ADA complacency rules. So, those, those are not waived by any COVID-19 response temporary conditions.
Great. Thanks for that clarification, Tom.
You're welcome.
Further question, further comments from the restaurant reopening group? Sergeant Kilroy, do you have anything for all two Commissioner Clancy's remarks?
Yes, ma'am. We did discuss that, as Mr. Clancy had mentioned. And it was, you know, we had spoken and whatever was required, and as he was, you know, very clear, and also Mr. Mayo brought up as well, if it is required, that handicap accessibility is an issue. This was the, the safest spot that we thought that was also, you know, away from the dining area. And it was also, you know, accommodating. And we also, Mr. Brown was very understanding in that if it was needed, then we, he would obviously accommodate. And as Mr. Clancy pointed out, it apparently is. And we feel as though the location would best be suited for all potties involved.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Karen, Karen, this is Susan. I can give an update on the MBTA if that would be helpful.
That would be great. Thank you.
So, I, I thought that mid-afternoon, I had the final form of the license I, that had gone to the Board of Selectmen and it had gone to Mr. Brown and his attorney. I did get a, late in the day, one further change. It won't interfere with the setup. They just wanted to make it clear that if there was an emergency on the tunnel cap, that the tables would have to be moved. If so, if they, if they had an emergency and they had to get on there with trucks, then, you know, that's going to have to take precedent over anything that's set up there. But I, I think that, you know, you can't really argue with that. So, I will be recirculating the, the revised license with that one, it's one additional sentence that they added this afternoon. I would, I can also report that I've been monitoring my emails during this meeting. And at 7:15, the approval signed by the necessary official at the MBTA arrived in my inbox. So, we do, the town does have official approval from the MBTA to grant the license for use of the tunnel cap.
You are like a magician. That was unbelievable. I, I can't explain how hard it was to get the MBTA to pay attention. Susan, you did a great job.
They, thank you. They, I got a call from the Senior Director of Real Estate at 6:30, who they were trying to chase down the person who needed to sign. And he said, Susan, we basically did a 70, seven zero, 70-day process in three days. That, that usually would have taken 70 days to get approved, and we did it. So, it was a great team effort. Karen, you helped. I would like to thank Representative Moschino and Senator O'Connor, who made personally made phone calls to the Director of Real Estate on our behalf. And then also the officials at the MBTA who let, who let us jump the line ahead of the dozens of things that were already on their desks.
Yeah. It, it was just really, really an incredible process. You know, I think you had, you had succinctly pulled together exactly what the request was. So, it was packaged well. And I, I do think you're absolutely right that the outreach by Representative Moschino and Senator O'Connor were really critical in getting the T to, to pay attention. The, you know, the original response that we got to Susan's point was like, yeah, you know, we'll see you in about four or five months when we're able to consider this. And, you know, I think that everybody is overworked. You know, the T is in, is in a crisis mode too, in terms of, you know, being able to run its, its primary operation of transportation. You know, so to deal with what they view as an ancillary real estate issue, you know, was asking, you know, was maybe a bridge too far until, you know, I think we got the right people involved to really, to prompt this. So, Susan, again, you know, really, really good work on this, including, I think, being able to keep the pressure on in a respectful and, and business-focused way to, to get this to a yes. So, thank you. And I guess one question I would have for you then is with respect to the vote that we need to take first tonight about the use of the tunnel cap, would you amend the vote? Would, do we need to amend the vote that we have before us?
No, the, the condition in the vote is just that it's subject to the execution of the, the license. And it's, it's going to be in a form dated today. So, I am going to recirculate it as soon as, I actually have it in my inbox from the T, the form. So, the date of the form is still the same as the date in the vote.
Okay. I guess so long as Joe, Mary, or I don't have any, any significant questions about the inclusion of that condition. But to your point, I think it, it seems intuitive to me that if there is an emergency requiring T access to the tunnel cap, that, you know, that, that, that takes precedence. Right?
Yep.
Okay. Joe, questions or comments with respect to the application by The Snug?
Well, all my questions concerning the license from the T, Susan's answered. Susan, while, while I'm talking, would you mind circulating that email so when we finally do the vote, we'll actually have the license in front of us? That'd be great. So, I mean, that's, when we're in a situation where we do not control the tunnel cap, it's, it's controlled by the T. Do you identify the issue? You handle it, Susan. So, thank you. And we really assembled a team to make that happen. And in the license, am I correct that we have their consent to install the porta potty?
Yes. That took a little, that took a little doing, but we have that.
Yep. I, I would say your, your emails with all caps as a subject line drew everyone's attention. So...
You know what? I try not to do that too often because sometimes it's a little much, but I, I, I thought it was necessary under the circumstances.
Am I correct that even though there will, we, we may wind up requiring a porta potty, am I correct that patrons are still allowed to go inside to use the restroom there and that the porta potty is being made available, but that wouldn't preclude them from going inside the restaurant? Is that correct? So, because I understand the real issue here is handicap access. And so, to the extent that there is an issue, the porti, the porta potties will be available. But to the extent that patrons really prefer the, the inside bathrooms, they'll be able to do that. I'm wondering if I could, if, if someone could show me on the map what the path would be that patrons would follow if they wanted to go to the restroom inside?
I believe it would be they would just come down this walkway, the, the kind of, and then they would just go, they would have to go in the front door. And I believe the bathrooms are in the back. But Ed, is that correct?
Yeah, the bathroom is in, to the right and left of the rear of the building. So, again, we'd have everything marked appropriately and certainly let people know, you know, which way to go. And we'll clearly mark with signage anything we need to do to, to help out our patrons, utilize the bathroom. So...
But one thing I can note is the, The Snug did provide the working group with their COVID-compliant internal layout for their internal tables. But that, and, and so Susan Tarnie was able to look at that before she was away for a few days. But we didn't include it because that, that's not covered by the OTS policy and approval process. But they did provide an internal flow for, and a layout of their tables in a COVID-compliant manner.
Yes. Yes. We sent that out to Susan and we got positive feedback that it was adequate for what is needed. So, there is clear pathway. When you come in the main entrance to The Snug, we have it marked properly, one way to the left, and you'd be able to travel to the bathroom proper distancing. And then returning, because there's no bar, patrons or seats, they would walk along the bar and exit to the opposite side of the front door.
Great. I noticed that directly across the street, 24 South Street, is a private residence.
Yeah.
Has there been notice to them? And whether, I don't know if we've heard any comments, positive or negative?
Well, I've spoken to John Bouvet, 24 South Street. He's one of my neighbors. He's actually on the Hingham Historical Committee or Board. He was very positive. We walked the site itself. He was very positive about us getting back in business and being able to bring something like outdoor dining to the downtown area. So, I literally, I spoke to him two hours ago.
That's...
And very positive feedback. I did provide all the tenants, my tenants and John, with a written letter, I believe, the Selectmen had forwarded a copy of the letter, just letting them know that what we're planning to do, trying to get approval with through the Selectmen. And everyone has been understanding and positive and looking, again, looking forward to, you know, us getting back in business and providing an alternative outdoor dining experience as opposed to, you know, being inside. So, I literally spoke to John two hours ago. So, he has a copy of it, and I spoke with him personally.
So, the, the other building that's across is 28 South Street?
Yeah, that's owned by Ruben Levy. I believe he owns a few buildings downtown. There's no residential, there were no residential units in there.
Right.
Couple of retail units. So, I didn't have any, I'm friends with Ruben, so I could still notify him. I don't think he'd have any issues at all with any outdoor seating as it wouldn't impact any one of his tenants. And again, there's no residential upstairs there. So, I think cloth is downstairs. It's a woman's clothing.
Yeah, cloth is downstairs.
Yeah. And then the one next to it, I believe, is a home accessory store. So, their hours are limited until 5 o'clock. I believe it, I think, I don't even know that right now. Yeah.
Yeah. So, to the extent that you can bring traffic to the area, I think all the stores would appreciate it.
Yeah. It's, you know, it's, I, I appreciate that, Joe, because, you know, we're trying to keep downtown alive. And I think being able to bring down, particularly in the summertime, you know, business, at least at my establishment, was off about 20%. People are heading down the Cape, or going to the islands, or going on vacation. So, we see a drop in overall revenue during the summer months. So, this would be a nice opportunity to be able to recoup some of the lost money over the past three months, but also be able to recoup that 20% or so that we lose in the summertime because it's, you know, people on vacation. So, you know, we patronize all the businesses downtown. My wife owns a hidden greenery, which, you know, is right around the corner. So, you know, we're, we're very active and involved merchants downtown. And again, we appreciate, particularly during the period of time when right now, the support from all the powers that be that are on this meeting right now. I really want to just say thank you to Susan Murphy too, for her outstanding efforts to get this going, particularly with MBTA. She's been in contact with Mike Nessie, my lawyer, at all hours of the day and night. And I would say thank you. And certainly thank you to, you know, yourself, Joe, Emily from coming down and just taking a look at what we're, we're trying to do down there. So, but that's where we're at.
Great. Okay. I've got no further questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Mary, questions?
I think all my questions have been answered throughout this discussion. I would just echo my thanks to, to Susan Murphy, to Mike Clancy, and also to Randy Sylvester and the DPW for everybody coming together to help make this happen.
I completely agree. You know, I think tonight you've heard the really quick turnaround from the, the restaurant reopening group and the support of other town services to, to get the amenities in place or the, the landscape in place to be able to allow the restaurants to move forward with this table service has just really, really been incredible. Very, very proud of the town team. Questions or comments from the public with respect to the outdoor table service requested by The Snug? Okay. Seeing none. I suppose it's only fair if I read the vote. So, the first vote is, "I move that the town enter into a license with BE&amp;E Inc. DBA The Snug for the use of the public alley and a portion of the tunnel cap adjacent to 116 North Street in connection with outdoor table service pursuant, pursuant to COVID-19 Order Number 35 for term expiring on November 1, 2020, or earlier termination of such outdoor table service, subject to such conditions as are set forth in the license draft dated June 25, 2020."
Karen, just keeping with the way you've traditionally done it, are you moving or are you saying that you would accept such a motion?
I actually moved it.
Okay. Then I'll second it.
Okay. Thank you. But thanks for that clarification. All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Karen? Aye. Okay. The second vote, which I will also move. "I move that the board approve the application of BE&amp;E Inc. DBA The Snug to expand outdoor table service OTS in accordance with COVID-19 Order Number 35 and the Town of Hingham COVID-19 Temporary Policy Regarding Restaurant Outdoor Table Service, the OTS Policy, subject to the following conditions. A. Site-specific conditions. This approval is subject to the applicant's execution and delivery of a license for the use of the OTS premises and the form required by the Town of Hingham and the MBTA, the license, and its continued compliance therewith. A failure, a failure to comply with a license shall be deemed a failure to comply with this approval. Two. In order to facilitate handicap accessibility to restroom facilities as needed, a porta potty shall be maintained by the applicant in accordance with the terms of the license. The final location of the porta potty shall be confirmed by the applicant with the restaurant reopening working group. Three. Patrons waiting for tables must be in their cars or in areas beyond the OTS premises where six feet social distancing can be maintained." or in areas beyond the OTS premises where six feet social distancing can be maintained. Four, no outdoor entertainment nor amplified sound shall be permitted. B, general conditions as previously recited in the prior motion. Is that a second, Mary?
Second.
All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Erin?
Aye.
Third vote. Uh, I move that the board approve the request of BE&amp;E Inc., DBA The Snug pursuant to COVID-19 Order Number 35 to temporarily alter the license premises under Liquor License Number 00010-RS-0528 for the period commencing as of the effective date of this approval and expiring on November 1, 2020.
Second.
All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Erin?
Aye.
Great. All right, well, very successful this evening. And again, my thanks to the uh to the incredible work of the Restaurant Reopening Team and um in particular our counsel Susan Murphy on this. So thank you.
Much, Karen. I really appreciate it.
Thanks.
Congratulations on your retirement.
Uh, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Uh, maybe it's okay to say that uh next pint's on me. How's that? Time of retirement pint, so.
Thank you very much, Ed. Uh, and you know, you know, I'm gonna take you up on that, so.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
All right. Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much.
Okay, public comment for items not on the agenda this evening.
Karen, this is Michelle. That was a good segue from Ed. As it is your last Board of Selectmen meeting, your colleagues may have something to read for you. And then there might be a few other folks on the line who want to share a couple of words, if you don't mind.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Um, so I'm gonna lead off. You know, several weeks ago, I mentioned that the Board of Selectmen uh really only issues proclamations uh under really significant and extraordinary times. And uh Joe and I are pleased to offer this tonight, and we will be reading this jointly. The Board of Selectmen hereby issues this proclamation for the exceptional service rendered by Karen A. Johnson. Whereas you, Karen A. Johnson, citizen volunteer, acting as chair and member of the Town of Hingham's Board of Selectmen over the last three years, have served as a role model for all those who may follow. And whereas, as a distinguished public servant steward, with a remarkable record of service to the town, this board, town employees, and the members of our community have benefited from your careful consideration of complex issues, commitment to transparency, and a high ethical standard, and profound respect for the many constituents of the town. And whereas, through your dedication to our veterans community, your support for affordable housing initiatives, and your sponsorship of targeted tax relief for seniors, you always strove to improve the well-being of our citizens in most need. And whereas you have left an everlasting legacy on the community through your selfless efforts to facilitate the historic acquisition of our water system, which will benefit the citizens of Hingham for generations to come, and
And whereas your unwavering advocacy for public safety, seniors and students in Hingham will result in a significant investment in new public safety infrastructure, an expanded senior center, and modern school facilities, which which will serve our residents from childhood through their golden years. And whereas during a time of unprecedented crisis, you demonstrated unparalleled leadership, financial stewardship, and strength to guide the citizens and businesses of Hingham through a global pandemic. Now therefore, we, Mary M. Power and Joseph M. Fisher, members of the Board of Selectmen of Hingham, proclaim our heartfelt gratitude and appreciation for all you have done on behalf of this great town, and extend to you and your family a sincere well done. Signed this 25th day of June 2020. Mary M. Power and Joseph M. Fisher.
Well, thank you. Thank you for that. Uh, it's um, it's much easier for me to be on the other side of the proclamation, so. I I thank you for your thoughtful words and it's been, um, it's just been my pleasure to be uh your colleague on the Board of Selectmen, uh particularly over this last year. Uh, I think uh we talked earlier, Joe, there were a number of curveballs that came our way this year that I think we handled um thoughtfully and methodically and uh with the continued good stewardship um that is the hallmark of this town. And uh I couldn't have done it uh without the two of you, so I appreciate those those kind words.
So, Mary, do you have, I I've I've got some additional words. I don't want to cut you off though, Mary, unless you wanted to uh let me go first.
You know, I I would just add, I I think um, you know, the there are many concepts in this proclamation. I would, I would add that, you know, I think from the time Karen started on the board, she reminded us all of the fragility of the downtown. And she really had a very pers, you've had a very persistent focus on the downtown. And I think that that's really shaped our focus and and during this pandemic, it's helped us to be very laser focused. Um, your work on the governance for the water company was just outstanding and critical to the passage. And um, I think the financial plan and in particular, um, your being able to articulate so much of what makes Hingham Hingham in that document is not only a blueprint for us going forward, but I think it's going to be a blueprint for boards to come. Um, lastly, I just say that I think those of us who have the privilege of sitting in these seats um know that for many of us, there is a time commitment and some personal sacrifices that we all make to enjoy the privilege of of serving. Those those sacrifices aren't always apparent to the general public, but it just only raises um my appreciation and respect for all of your many contributions. So uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary.
Um, so Karen, I I've only had the opportunity to work with you for a year. But in that year, um, I I've learned three important skills from you. And I I thought about this and wanted to wrote it down, so I wouldn't miss them um when I spoke this evening. Uh, first, I learned leadership. And leadership is not just telling people what to do. It's not simply being a director of operations or a senior official that other folks have to follow. What I've learned from Karen is real leadership, effective leadership, which means you have to be good at motivating others, delegating to others, having a positive attitude, and demonstrating that you are a trustworthy person, someone who acts with honesty and integrity. It means that you have awareness, not just about others, but also about yourself. And it means that you know how to build relationships. And Karen, you've demonstrated all those traits from your dealings with the water acquisition, company acquisition, to navigating the twists and turns of this COVID pandemic. You've really proven to be a true leader. Second, I learned from you about running a meeting. I came to the Board of Selectmen after 15-plus years on the Zoning Board of Appeals. And during that period, I chaired literally hundreds of meetings and dealt with numerous contentious issues. During our zoning meetings, we had developers who were anxious to get their projects approved. We had residents who were upset about what their neighbors were planning to do on abutting properties. And I was convinced that I had all the skills. I knew all the techniques necessary to run an effective meeting. Then I joined the Board of Selectmen and I got to participate in board meetings led by you, Karen, and I saw a true master at work. I discovered that I had a lot to learn about navigating issues and personalities at meetings. And over the last year, I feel like I've been an apprentice, learning skills that will serve me well in the future. And the third thing that I really learned from you is excellence. Karen, you've set a high standard for yourself in everything you do for the town. You don't just attend meetings, you actively prepare for the entire agenda. You don't just review financial statements, you get behind the numbers and flag the issues that may need to be explained or resolved. And you don't just meet with residents, you get to know them and you appreciate their concerns and expectations. All in all, you've set a high bar for your fellow selectmen, and I'm hopeful that I can live up to the example that you've set. Thank you, and you'll be missed.
Thank you, Joe. Um, one thing I'll say is, sitting in in that seat, I learned uh from Paul and I learned from Mary. I learned from my experience on the Advisory Committee, from great chairs like John Asher, who I know is on the line. I I think this is one of those things that you accumulate as your experience goes on. And um, I think we've, we we all benefit from the just incredible volunteer pool uh that comes before us here in Hingham. So I'm just uh just proud to have played my part in in that lineup. Um, so thank you.
So I'm hoping if we have any other speakers, they'll be giving a rebuttal statement.
I think I see my daughter on the line. Uh, I think John Asher's hands up.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Um, well, this is for other folks uh who are on the call. I wish we could all be together instead of zooming. Um, I've worked together on town matters with Karen since we were both appointed to the Advisory Committee 13 years ago. During that time, Karen has played a key role in the town's purchase of the Lincoln School Apartments for Elder Citizens, construction of the Commander Anderson House for homeless veterans, and most recently, as you've heard, acquisition of the water company. This past year, she's also led the Board of Selectmen and the town through one of the most challenging times in the town's almost 400-year history. That's an impressive legacy, and it was accomplished with grace, empathy, integrity, attention to detail, a beautiful writing style, and importantly, a sense of humor. It's even more impressive, given the personal sacrifices that Karen has made to continue serving the town. Karen, it's been a real pleasure working with you over the years. And after you take time to catch up on the rest of your life, I hope for all our sakes you will continue to bring your considerable skills and expertise to bear on important town matters. Thank you for a great job over many years.
Thank you, John. Appreciate that. Michelle Air?
Good evening, everyone. Um, while I came for the porta potty talk earlier, I'm really here. It was fascinating and reminds me of all the wonderful work that the Board of Selectmen does. And I am sort of new to the Karen Johnson Fan Club. Um, we actually only met, surprisingly, three years ago when we were both running um You for Selectmen and Me for School Committee. Uh, apparently I did not get the memo because three years later, I'm the only one standing for reelection while everyone else has gone about their business. So, but I just wanted to say though, um, just personally, I thank you so much for all you have done, um, not only for the town over the last 13 years, um, but also just over the last three years for the town. I know it has not been easy, and I do not think there are many people um who will ever understand the sacrifices that you made to fulfill the role of select person on, for this town. Um, but it is appreciated and it is an honor to have served alongside you in another elected position. I will miss you incredibly as a person and as a colleague um serving the town. But I do wish you the best of luck. I hope you have a wonderful semi-retirement. We're gonna call it from town work, because we all know there are plenty of places we can use you. So thank you really, honestly. You have been um just amazing to work with. It has been a span or couple of years. Um, no one could have expected all the things you were gonna come up with, especially where it came uh to the schools. But your leadership in helping us with the MSBA, with Foster School, um, and everything else you've done to support the school, the students, and while also taking care of all the rest of the citizens of the town is more than admirable. So thank you so much.
Thank you for your kind remarks. I appreciate that. Uh, Paul Healy, uh-oh.
Oh.
Tom told me 7:30, Karen. I knew that wasn't gonna happen. Uh, but seriously, um, I'd like to add my voice to the chorus, you know. Quite frankly, you came to the board at a time when the board really needed you to arrive. And I want to thank you deeply for that. And and most especially, at a time when we we worked so well together on one of the biggest issues this town's ever faced. And, you know, with Mary and yourself, it it was a pleasure, truly a pleasure. Um, you know, you you brought uh competence, quality, reasoning, the whole nine yards, it just clicked so well. And I I truly enjoyed the two years that I had the privilege and pleasure of working with you. I've served on a lot of boards with a lot of fine residents, but none so fine as yourself and Mary. And, you know, it's not 36 months you've been serving, it's 38. And in some of the toughest times the town has faced, and you have acquitted yourself superbly. Um, and without explicitly putting it out there, there's few selectmen who've paid the price that you have in your service to the town. So I really, really thank you deeply.
Oh, I really appreciate that. And uh, you know, I think that my introduction to service on the Board of Selectmen with you and Mary uh could could not have been a better experience. And uh, you know, I, as I wrote the town report this year, you might have seen, I started out with picking up from that positive momentum from that historic town meeting. Because, you know, I think it, for me, the the crush of what happened this year, the 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 busyness and and the and the end where we had to really um, you know, pull together a new financial plan for FY21. I I didn't want us to forget what we had accomplished. And um, and that was so historic and and uh, you know, I think will, as you have aptly put it, was a was a legacy move for town meeting. And, you know, I think the three of us um together with all of the advisors and all of the volunteers that we had um were able to bring that to town meeting with the kind of credibility that town meeting needed in order to to make the decision. So I I really thank you for your service and your continued service to the town and um my experience on the Board of Selectmen with you, Paul.
Thank you, Karen. Don't forget to get a talent bank application.
Phil Ramsey.
So Karen, I just wanted to thank you for your tremendous service. You set the bar way too high for your uh, your successor. But, you know, what I will say to you is uh, you know, the thing I remember of your service on the board is your tremendous uh ability to get back to constituents. Anytime anybody has emailed you about any issue, you respond to everyone. And, you know, every time I've emailed you, you've responded to me the next day. And I tell you, that speaks a lot about you as an elected official, but also as a person. And um, you set the bar way too high for your successor, whoever that may be. But I thank you for your service not only in the BOF, but your many years on advisory as well. Uh, your your intelligence and your dedication to your constituents will be greatly missed. Thank you for your service.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Okay, well, I I appreciate this. Um, I do have some remarks, but I also, um, if there are further public comments about something besides me, uh, and and or if there are town administrator or Board of Selectmen reports, uh, we could move to that.
I think there are a few more folks on the line first. Sorry, Karen. I think Mr. Cristello wanted to offer a couple of remarks.
Erin, um, you know, I just want to join all my distinguished colleagues uh to to note um, all the years of incredible service uh and time you spent um on the town's business. Um, you know, this probably isn't even a complete list, uh, six years on the Advisory Committee, four years in the Town Administrator Bylaw Study Committee, and three is Selectmen. That's certainly more than a fair share of community service to this town. But just a recitation of of time really doesn't capture your your contributions. Uh, I've had the privilege of serving with you for the last few years in a couple of different committees. And from that that vantage point, I've been able to observe just how incredibly hard you work, how dedicated you are, and how much you care about making this community better. And it's those contributions that I value most and for which I believe we all owe you our thanks. Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, Charlie. Thank you very much.
Karen, I'm gonna jump in. This is David. Let's say a couple of words, since I've known you, known you for a few years, so I can tell you're sufficiently embarrassed by now. So I will try to be just really brief and just kind of echo what others have said. Um, had the chance to work with you now for, I guess, the 13 years going back to your days in AdCom and and what is Selectmen. And with Charlie, we were on the Town Administrator Bylaw Committee. We forget, you know, when we're seeing our way out of a crisis now, we kind of, there was a little bit of a crisis called the Great Recession toward the early days on your Advisory Committee time, so there was so there was a couple crises that you've seen through during your time serving Hingham, so it's been great. And I just want to say, I mean, there's very few people I've known and worked with over these years that are as passionate and energetic and dedicated as you, and definitely distinguished public servant, I think that was the language Mary used, definitely represent the volunteer spirit of Hingham above and beyond, and I kind of consider the Board of Selectmen a volunteer job, even though it's technically not, it really is a volunteer job with all the effort you guys put in, so I just want to say thank you and echo that everybody else's words, and kind of jump on and say, you know, you get about a two-week vacation before you get appointed to another board, so enjoy it, okay?
Thank you, thanks, Dave, I appreciate it, and our history actually goes back to the softball team at Ropes and Gray, so.
Too, many, many years ago.
Still got your fastball there, Council.
Michelle?
I'll go next, if there's no one else on the line who wants to jump in. All right. Well, Karen, I just wanted to say, you were part of the original Board of Selectmen that welcomed me to Hingham about two years ago. I'm still relatively early in my career in local government here in Massachusetts, and you and Mary have really been role models for me, I've learned so much from you guys. You are incredibly articulate, incredibly thoughtful, you've dedicated so much time and energy to this job, and like others have said, you've given up a lot for this job, and it's always been to do what's in the best interest of this community. So, thank you for your leadership, thank you for your service. I hope you can get some free time in your life right now, and I know I will see you soon, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay, I get to come up last. This is something I've been looking forward to for a few days. So, I'm just gonna read a prepared message, because I don't want to screw this up, this is too important. When Karen was elected to the Board of Selectmen, Ted Alexiottis told me that this was a big day for the town. He was right. Karen immediately infused the board and our office with an energy that hasn't waned since. In the first few months, Karen helped us revamp and modernize our internal process for issuing liquor licenses. We began our work on finding a new operationally appropriate location for the North Fire Station, and we continued to hone our message and approach towards municipal ownership of the town's water system, and so much more. Right up until the end of her extended term, Karen has been a moral and thought leader in town. As the head of our local government in the midst of an unprecedented pandemic, Karen has been a steady hand on the wheel, ensuring that all of our i's are dotted and t's crossed. I won't repeat here what others have already said, but I have one last thought I wanted to share about my great fortune to have been able to work with Karen Johnson for the past three years. Karen was a big part of the decision to give me a chance to prove myself as a town administrator. I promised at the time to always put the town first and to work tirelessly on its behalf. However, that wasn't the whole job. Through personal example after example, Karen made it clear that bringing strong moral character and a sense of ethics to our work is what sets Hingham apart. It's what encourages us to hear all sides of an issue, and subsequently come to the right decisions on behalf of the town over and over again. And for that, and for the opportunity Karen granted me two and a half years ago, I wanted to say thank you. I will always work to make you proud of this town and of this office, and the Town of Hingham is better because of your service. Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, Tom. Well, I want to say thank you now, and I first want to start with Tom and Michelle. The hours that you put in, the dedication that you have to each other, to the town, to the office, to Joe, to Mary, to me, to Heidi, to Sharon, it's, as Paul noted earlier, it's a team effort. And Tom, you and Michelle have built a culture of teamwork, not only in the office of the Board of Selectmen, but throughout Town Hall. That was lacking, frankly, when you arrived, and you have, in a very short period of time, altered the culture, which is no easy task. You two make a tremendous team, and I've been happy to be a part of that bench. To my colleagues, Joe and Mary, and to Paul Healy, you know, we, I talked earlier about learning from each other. I think we, I do that every single day, and have taken just tremendous thanks in the dedication that all of you have shown to the role of the Board of Selectmen, because you all have set the standard for this town of what it means to be on the Board of Selectmen, and that, the remarks made about me tonight can be said about each and every one of us. We bring, we bring moral efficacy to the table, we bring our own skill sets, we utilize those skills in the best interest of the town, and, you know, I think we have worked together, particularly this year, to undertake some very significant projects from the Water Company to foster school, to the new public safety facility, and it's not a one-person show, it's a, it's a team effort, as always, and I appreciate, again, being on the bench with you. You know, I've got to thank the voters of Hingham who gave me the opportunity to serve this community that I care so deeply about. I never thought that I would run for elected office, and, you know, for a variety of reasons, the opportunity arose, and I was amazed at the people in this town who support good governance. It transcends party, it transcends particular, any particular issue. It's a, it's a care about civic pride in our community, where we want somebody to sit in the seat and to use their heart and their soul and their mind to come to decisions that, again, advance the best interest of this community. And it was really just astounding to me at the numbers of people that come out in support of those of us who have the opportunity to step forward and serve, and I couldn't be more grateful for that and humbled by that. And last but not least, I need to, I need to thank and want to thank my family. My husband, Jim, my kids, Meg, Peter, and Chris, you've supported me, you've listened to me, you've understood when I couldn't be there in the way I wanted to be for all of you. This was an important role for me to see through, and without your support, I could never have done it. I know that sometimes maybe my stories about porta potties, for instance, on the tunnel cap, might have, might have really pushed the limit, but again, your belief in me gave me the courage and the confidence to step forward, and that you never, you never let me down there. You were always there to support my work, and I appreciate that. This is a very special town that prides itself on civil discourse, consensus building, and civic commitment. Those values were on display for the world to see last Saturday at our first-ever outdoor town meeting. I appreciated all the folks who were able to attend and participate, and I appreciate all the staff and volunteers who worked so diligently to put the important business of the town before the meeting. It has truly been my honor to serve as a selectman. This town is in great hands, and I urge you to vote on Saturday, because local government matters. I leave you with a quote from President Theodore Roosevelt. "This country will not be a good place for any of us to live, unless we make it a good place for all of us to live." I know that that has been a guiding principle of this Board of Selectmen, and I know that sentiment continues on in this community. Be well all, and thank you for your time this evening.
Sir.
Okay, so now, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
I move adjourn.
Second. All those in favor, Joe.
Aye.
Mary.
Aye.
Erin.
Aye.